Back to that. There was a thing in Tennessee. And here we go.
Okay, it is six o'clock. Today is Thursday, July third. We are in Lincoln City Hall. And we can stand by that's. I'd like to leave this. We have a point at the United States of America. Actually, we've been calling for which stands one nation under God in this world with liberty and justice for all. And what auditor if he could do the role. And then stand.
Here.
Have no Schmickos?
Here.
Yeah, we're here. Can I just verify nobody going like Amanda or Artabian?
No, I was. I was shared down to the group. At first we have the agenda approval. I would, I appreciate your motion. To remove line item eight. And keep that on the fucking next. To me.
I can't even remove line item number eight. I'm here in minutes.
First firm councilman Schumaker.
I'll say.
The second firm councilman Yonstad. But she carries next under consent agenda. We have the June nineteenth, twenty twenty five minutes, April twenty five statement. June payables and the main statement. I would enter through a motion to. Remove the new statement from the consent agenda.
So particularly.
Uh, it is a very present.
I made a motion to remove the main statement from the consent agenda.
First one councilman Yonstad.
I'll say good.
Second firm councilman Schumaker, all the papers say I.
Right.
The post and much in carries.
Under your motion will approve.
Yes.
I made a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
You have a first by councilman Yonstad. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, but councilman Schumaker, I say I.
I mean.
A post. And so moved. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment, public comment for those items that are on the agenda. Second call. The final call. See now we'll move on to number seven, under old business, the Lincoln wastewater.
Good evening. I don't have an update on this. Um, my understanding is that the last meeting, the council approved an addendum to allow for the re study and the issue that I need to look at, which I haven't done yet, which is. Whether we need a separate addendum deal dealing with the deliverables. Um, I just have a lot of to it, so I'll report back up.
If I may kind of piggyback on this, um. Last week. The Daniel Charles with Nexus was able to set up a meeting for myself to meet with him and. Mike Mark at the. Uh, City of Bismarck Public Works. Um, he listened to the meeting from. About a month and a half before reduced us some of the red flags that we saw with. The proposed contract that they sent us and. Discussing what some of our concerns were with that. He told me that they're very open to making changes with that. Uh, he said that that was kind of. His initial thoughts on what they would like for kind of protecting their sewer system or. A plant and everything like that. After our discussion, like going back and forth, explaining why we're concerned about a lot of those things and finding out that he is very open to discussing it and. Working things out to make it more appeasable for both parties. I do feel more comfortable if once this rate study is done and it does look like the sewer rationalization was still probably our best option. That we would be able to work things out and get a a better contract that we're more prepared for. So. Just thought I'd mention that.
Loretta Marschek with S E H. I just wanted to add a few comments regarding this item. So we talked about the deliverables. I know that was a question at the last meeting, so I just wanted to reach out and tell you that. The deliverables for this amendment would include four technical memos as well as the final rate model in an Excel format. Um, we also are working to coordinate a meeting. Um, hopefully we can get that next week with our staff and city to talk about, um. Population projections and data needs so that we are moving forward with getting things rolling. Any questions for us on this item? Well, is that the email that you sent asking all council? Yes, part of the discussion. Yep, they were asking for everyone's input. Um, I appreciate that. Okay, so you know, we're working through that and as soon as we get a time set up. We'll move forward.
I I have heard to ask this question, but is it? Asking for input from all of the council members by email or in a meeting or?
No, I will just share it for me since that we were going to be discussing. Just the way I read that email.
And and I don't do the only thing is my antenna goes up a little bit because.
Special meeting.
Because I, well, if if you're all on a group email and you're sharing information in that, we have very, very careful about that. So information can go from. The engineer to all of you on the council, but if if there's a request for all of you now to respond, then we have to have a meeting for that. We can't, you can't do that to any given process.
Right. I think it was more just informational to, um, those involved in this discussion. So the portfolio holder, public works director, mayor.
You've got to cover it. I just.
I gotta get on now.
My, my, you know, I just in the back of my mind, it was an issue and I thought I was just aggressive to make sure that we not, you know, unintentionally create a overleading of the.
It's always good to check, check and double check. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Um, and then just a quick note before we go on. I don't know if anybody in the audience. Here's the difference in the microphones. So our auditor and the office staff had sent or requested. For someone to come in and we get everything up. So hopefully this will make things easier for everyone to hear.
That's very nice.
And even getting a couple more speakers. So that'll be good. All right, next, uh, number nine, which is now number eight, uh, tree board restructuring discussion. Turning around the read.
Okay, and you took some straw into our brain.
Yes, for next.
I had just one question about that. Um. I'm wondering, is part of the some straw against if the council would like us to come with? A policy involving, um. Storage containers. So, uh, and in the context that this come comes up in is the city receiving a request from an applicant or permission to place a storage container. Uh, adjacent to their home. Um, and it sounds like from the request that if the permanent placement. And our analysis of that, which we sent out today to the city, um, was that. Based on the lit request was done that. This. We're analyzing it as being in in like a shack, right? So if you, if you want to place a storage container in your, in your yard. Permanently store your stuff and that's really a shed. And then so it's got to comply with the. Um, accessory building parts of your code as to where it can be located and its size. And then our analysis is we need to look at whether or not this would comply with the building. Code, the building requirements. Um, the analysis becomes somewhat different when someone wants to have it there on a temporary basis, like, you know. For the, uh, we're remodeling the house, but I want it there for ninety days, right? But we don't have anything in our code. That's going to regularly have grass, like the city of Bismarck does have provisions in their code. That allow temporary use somewhat similar to what we're talking about in the context of dumpster ordinance. Um. Anyway, I'm driving over here tonight. I was thinking, well, maybe it makes sense to bring these at the same time because they are somewhat related as far as the having a temporary dumpster in your temporary. Sewer container. So I'm just wondering if the council would like us to try to work that in as well.
Exactly. That'd be reasonable. They seem very similar in that context.
Would it be just one organism?
Uh, I'm not sure how the mechanics work, but we would, we would draft them with a similar. Timing provisions and make them so that they're, they fit together well and figuring out where they go. Might be one word and sort of making two different spots. I'm just, I'm not sure where we're recording the code, but we could do it as a single. Resolution to change, change the code in two places if we need to.
I think that's a great idea. Awesome.
I think, oh. So on the, uh, Madam Mayor, there's the council on the tree board restructuring discussion. So. I think this is on the agenda, came up last week. And my comment last week was we needed some more input as to what. Structural changes or what, how to move this forward, right? So, um, I thought that the next step would be to have a con conversation between the council and the park district. Uh, about. What are the areas where where there might be some overlap? So the tree board. Uh, has some responsibility to care for trees. It has some responsibility to regulate trees. There has some responsibility to maintain trees, you know. Trimming or ornament property owners to trim, so they have some regulatory authority. My understanding and in my history on this has been very deep, but my understanding is that. One of the issues that the city is having is that the employees or contractors of the park board. Were providing some kind of service or care to the city's trees and that that's no longer happening. So one of the issues that needs to be addressed is how. How the city is going to get those services. And so. Structurally, um, I don't think we can just move the tree board duties to the park district. And we talked about that. So then the question is, well. What are the problems that we're trying to solve? And then once I have an agree with those, are we, um, either changing code or, you know, charge powers agreement with the park was period or the city can. Can, you know, fit out forest tree services, if asked what you need for someone to like give you advice about how to maintain your trees. So I'm not really sure what the issue is that we're trying to. What the, what's driving the change? Because I don't know that. I don't know how to like make a recommendation. Um, so. I guess I need more information, needing more input from you as to what. What we're trying to accomplish, right? I mean, I know one of the issues was. Maintaining the enough people interested in serving on the tree board and, you know, maybe the way to do that is to fold it into the council. So there, there, there are multiple things we can look at if I have a better idea. What the consensus is as to what issues are and what direction you want to go. Um, otherwise we're kind of driving, we'll, you know, find blind as to what could be to be reckoned.
Thank you.
What are you possible to, if you were to have a budget, you know, that and and the, the art department among the retainer for maintaining the city's trees or. You know, more as a venture versus. Uh, instead of having a tree board between the service provider?
Yeah, I think that the, uh. The city, uh, oh, yeah, the, the tree, the tree board is, is not a separate legal entity, right? It's a, it's a subset of the city. Um, whereas the park board is a separate people entity, right? And, and so I think how we could solve that if there was going to be an agreement. Between the, the park board and the tree board or, yeah, or the city, we would just do it through a trade power agreement, right? For, or some kind of contract, probably a trade power agreement. Uh, where the city would contract with the park district to. To do certain tasks for the city. And, you know, then we can negotiate what the pay with that for that, about the compensation would be.
You, councilor Christa.
Um, I guess I, I'm not too sure what the issues were that. Brought the previous council to want to roll the tree board into the, um, park district, but. I think the first thing that we're going to look at is to see exactly what. Tasks we have assigned to the tree board. And then kind of go through that and see if there's specific things that we feel aren't being followed. Um, and kind of go from there to figure out if we feel we need to. See about assigning that to or contracting with the park district for any of these tasks that we feel are being created with the tree board. Basically, I think I would be in agreements with. The attorney that I'm not really too sure what the issues have. Arisen that started this whole thing, so. I think I'd be looking.
Oh, um, I was on the park board when this all started. And so I do have a little background information. Uh. Previously, services. Some services were provided between the city and the parks. Parks took care of the trees. Planting and watering and maintaining. Uh, and then in return. Public works individual, uh. Would help with oil changes or lawn mower. You know, care, that type of thing on an annual basis, getting ready for the season. A sharpening blades. When that individual was no longer able to do that, uh, then it was okay. Well, we can charge you. We'll just throw a number out there of a hundred dollars an hour if you want the city to do this. And then it became okay, so. We both represent the city. How can we do this? And that's how the whole conversation started. And that was a few years ago. Yeah, well, it had to have been. So I think this is just continued discussion since then. And then, uh. I think it's a great idea to go back and see what the, the needs would be for both entities. And decide if. You know, if it makes sense to shrink. The tree board. Make it responsible if the city, they're just to be that. Way to go through, but, um. At this point, I think the history. If we can just sit both entities down and say, these are our needs. Can we work this out? That's the best way to go about it. So I guess. That might be something then to discuss with. I have to know the board first and see what they. Would you like to be a part of that conversation? Well, I have talked to them that they can.
Yeah, I mean, I suggested maybe they would just come to a meeting, but I don't know that I need to be, you know, what, what makes sense to me is. The tree board's responsibilities are set by your ordinance. And, um, you know, some of that is, like I said, is care, watering the trees, care of the city trees. Some of it is also. Um, it, it has some regulatory authority to tell property owner, just to keep your trees growing instead of renovating or whatever, right? So there's also regulatory component. And then one of the issues I thought was not adding enough citizens involved. And I think your ordinance provides that if you don't have enough members, then two members in the council. Or the tree board, whatever, right? So I'm not sure which of, which of those things needs attention, but if it's the care and watering or whatever of trees, then I think we'd do that is to. Figure out if the park board has any appetite to contract with the city and work on, you know. What that looks like. And then once, you know, once you get that far, then, then Gavin or I can be involved, gather the trade powers for me to memorialize whatever that means.
I mean, uh, a good way to go about it would be to have, uh, the beautification portfolio holder. Go through, become familiar with, or for those responsibilities. And this is a perfect time to do it because it's a change of portfolios now. So, uh. And then. Attending those meetings where the partners are there. And then bring it to. The council as far as discussions on. What might be best. And so we'll let you know.
Okay, it's fine. Yeah.
Okay. So we'll maybe just table that item, um. At least until the. Beautification portfolio holder becomes aware of the situation. And if nothing else on that, we'll move on to the S E H master contract as city engineer. And also release the attorney.
So we've had some really good conversations this week on giving the three million place with S E H to provide city engineering services and we're. Um, as I explained last week, we're working on a, a idea, a master service agreement. That will be applicable to all work that S E H does and then a standalone supplemental letter agreement that would be for the city engineering services. The, uh, um, master service agreement with the general terms, I think that's substantially done. And I think we just have some formatting issues that we can get fixed. And I think that's. Uh, at least from the legal standpoint is done, uh, subject to council's review and approval. On the. Kind of the, um, supplemental letter agreement, which would be the city engineer, um, services, um. I think. Received yesterday, kind of a proposal from S E H that would divide those services into, uh, one bucket would be kind of a flat rate. Services like I'm going to be retainer. And then the other part would be hourly services or mostly hourly services under the city engineer, um. Supplemental letter agreement. And then there might be, you know. Other agreements for other projects that are more. Have more of a scope, but, um. We got, we got that yesterday. I haven't had a chance to review that to console. So what, what? What I think will happen is next week, um. Mayor and I should be able to sit down through that and make sure that from the city's standpoint, we're all on the same page. And then, um. Once we finalize something, which then I think the draft needs to get pushed out of these to all council members. Um, so they can review it and then we can have a pool. The question is timing. Um, if you want to do it sooner than the next meeting and have a special meeting just for that, for purposes of repeatedly. Those agreements will be do that, of course, there next week. If, if I think we'll be ready, that's substantially done, so. But that's what, that's what we are.
Yes. So did council get the draft agreements?
I don't think so. They had nothing. I don't think they've been pushed out yet to, to the council.
Is I, I, I think they were included in the packet I shared, so I'm not sure if they went in the council's packet. Okay, councilman Schumaker saying yes. Okay. And with the discussions, um, I mean, the master agreement. I think, um, looks great. A lot of hard work went into that. Just so everyone knows, I, I do see, um, if. We've discussed the. Tac and board of adjustments. Correct that currently those are on a fascinated basis, but I think those need to go into those basic engineering services. But the rest of it. I have looked at and I'd be okay. But. Have you looked at them, councilor Christa?
Uh, I believe that I have not had a chance to review it. I don't have any concerns, um. I really see a large concern that I don't have potentially arise is just with some projects already being added by S E H, just that we don't be double billed on something. I'm sure you guys can make sure that. Timing is approved appropriately.
Oh, definitely. We'll have, uh, very, um, detailed invoicing. So I think it'll be very clear where time is spent. So there shouldn't be a question of that.
Okay.
I think you have having a special meeting that was in the next week to, to.
I am on vacation currently. And I threw that following week. And but I, and I will be leaving town Wednesday afternoon. So it was everybody. And then I should say that, well, but, uh, we, we will be out. So is there a possibility that we could have it sooner than later? Because this agreement goes into effect in July. Our, uh. Our current engineers have been very patient with us. And so I appreciate. Them holding on while we work through this, but. That would just be a question then, if you believe that we have, that everybody would have an opportunity earlier next week rather than later?
I guess time wise actually, but.
I'll be traveling out state, but I can make myself a bit more.
Yeah, cool.
Oh, but I guess it's ultimately.
Well, I perceive that, I mean, I think you're done. I mean, it's just to, like I said, that my, from a legal standpoint, most of my. Legal concern was in the M S A and the, kind of the, the terms that were there, which we've reached agreement on now. Um. There was some formatting names, so there might be, you know, two tweets here and there. Um, and there are a couple of things that I need to sit with. Maybe a few about on the S O A, but I don't perceive that that's also going to take too. You know, headed this thing's done. So do you tell me when you want to have a meeting and we'll make sure that for the time. The materials, so. Probably not one day.
So I don't work, no, I'm. So, so could we do that, um. On Tuesday evening? That way if somebody else comes or during the day, if that was better for. Anyone else? Cause I guess I can, I can call in while I'm gone. So we'd be up to sign.
Shouldn't have any specific constraints, so. I'll leave that up to others.
Yeah, kind of. Not that my schedule is the most important one, but yeah, I'm available on, on Tuesday, so.
Indeed, type evening? Evening probably first for. Into.
Then it's to you all, but not requiring for me.
Can we do five thirty? We have time to leave strength from the office to come in. That works.
Schedule that tentatively about this. House members are taking, is.
As well as ensure that. So if you could send out that. Needing any value, just repost that online. That you may be fed thirty hours. And so we'll discuss the S L A and the M S A. Or.
Yeah.
That's true. Any questions for me? On this item? We're good.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, we just should buy you time.
And we have a time. Just.
I think.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the data center, center ordinance review and consideration.
I'd like to work on generating an ordinance that prevents status and authority within the city of Lincoln, city limits.
Well, and before Mitch Flanagan had come in, we had talked about it that week that you had asked for a treaty on the agenda. And, um. He had sent. That through. Release there in your packets. So if we take a look at those. Versus coming up. Just for discussion because I, I certainly am in agreement if we don't. And it might not be the most ethemphagious thing for the city of Lincoln.
And I'd agree, especially the way Lincoln is set up at this time. I could see something like this if we happen to have a very large industrial area that there wasn't, wouldn't be anything crowded, like residential or anything like that. But the way we're set up right now, there really would not, you know, be. Place that I would see as being a good place for a data center. So I guess I wouldn't have objections to. So I guess I wouldn't have objections to having an garden set up that if not completely restricted, has some, some major limitations on what can be.
So shall we take a look at the ordinances, the proposed ordinances that are in the packet and come back at the next meeting?
I mean, for that. Works.
And my suggestion would be if you're looking at this. Thinking about how it would fit into our zoning. Right? You just, because that ultimately, if you want to adopt this. We're creating some zoning restrictions. Um, again, we can do it, but we're flat to modify these. You know, if you want to use Burley County as an example, have to modify it to fit into our zoning scheme.
Senator, may I ask you, are these the ones that came from Burley County?
Correct, from Mitch Flanagan.
Okay.
He wanted you guys to have them.
So they'll take a look and review those and start the discussion and then maybe someone would volunteer to or step up to do a sound or a draft ordinance to present to council before it went to the town. Or were we with the engineering because it would be.
Or even if you didn't do a draft, even if you just told us that it's the only area of Lincoln that we would allow this would be in this, so you know, heavy industrial or whatever, right? That we would want to slot this in to be prohibitive in all areas except Ted. And I have not moved into the circle. I don't exactly have the example, but only heavy industrial. Um, or only heavy industrial as a special use where you've got to give permission ahead of time, right? So there, there are other strategies that we can employ with zoning, but what we want, even if we have a draft, is just giving us the direction of what, what it is you'd like to see. And then we can figure out how to incorporate it into the code.
And maybe one of the biggest areas that we need to concentrate on, other than if we're going to and where is what is retained for deconstruction of that, because it's very expensive. We don't want them to just get, get, lock out if by chance citizens want to get us to allow for the death centers. So I think the Burley County had Mitch Flanagan had had presented a hundred twenty percent of the cost. Somewhere around that range. So it's very expensive. That is our concern. On your new business, we, oh, I'm sorry. I apologize, Mayor and Councilmembers. Some direction from you possibly. I had included in my memorandum, um, a couple of items regarding an update to project management and amendment. And I don't know if that's something that we can still address in your business since it wasn't included in the amendment to the agenda when it was approved. If not, is that something that we could table for the next meeting? I believe that under um, public works portfolio, we could add that in, we could add that in. Okay, thank you. You want to include that as part of your portfolio? Thank you for that direction. On your business, we have Trucker Brokstart, big vending machine, then Crystals Bar and Moon Bay.
Evening. It's nice to meet you all here.
Awesome.
I guess I've never been acting like this, so uh, cool easy on me, but I just am putting a, a new machine in Crystal's body, um, according to uh, Lincoln. Lincoln ordinance twelve oh seven oh eight, a state tobacco license is required and also approval from the city. So I'm just here today to formally ask for permission to do that. Um, my business has all the required state things like sales and use test permit and a tobacco license. And uh, vending machines are unique, that you need a tobacco license for each one. So it's a specific one just for their, not for my own business. Come to the ID scanner on it. Um, no purchases are able to be made until the far trailer on driver's license is scanned. It also will be within eyesight of the bar, where bartenders can watch and picture nowhere under twenty one. Receives access to the area. Um, another state ordinance says that, you know, it has to be in twenty one plus location. So if you set up a query, it's a lot. Yeah, I, if you have any questions for me, I would love to answer.
Councilmembers?
When an ID is scanned, what kind of data shows that can the, the system, the vending system need to?
It's a typical blockchain instrument. So it just gets the move, uh, data birds, all that. That is not something I can actually see, but it is stored with that N I X, which is my credit card company or a credit card reader on it. So I'm seeing the ID of the person who's actually standing, but if it were ever to be an issue, law enforcement, they could with, I'm sure it would be a process, but they could get to that information.
Does Crystals currently sell cigarettes?
No, no, they don't.
I have a question for council. As said, you've never considered imposing an access tax or syntax on these types of goods or if we have anything in place right now, but.
If I may, the state North Dakota does not on, uh, tobaccoless nicotine. So babes, um, you know, nicotine doctors, they don't have max size tags. So.
Believe as individuals or as a city, we can impose if we choose. And if, if that is something we want to get as a commitment, then we need to do that before we offer something like this that would be grandfathered in the possibly create confusion in the future. Just wondering if that was something that we would want to make into.
It'd be over the same move, what other C said on, there's something like this. Really, the only concern I have is somebody could come in with any ID to scan it. Um, I know the location itself technically, somebody is required to be twenty one to be in that location. And there or somebody might step in, it's not twenty one. Could all tap in. I don't know if that's ever been an issue around this particular bar or not. Um, but I guess that's really my only concern is there really isn't anything verifying that the person scanning the ID is actually over that ID. That is a fair one. But I would say that it is more secure than a gas station or anywhere like that where it's up to the person. So this is, it's two authentications technically. The ID, which is the most forward one, which a lot of gas stations truthfully, I mean, look old enough. Or maybe they're friends with someone too. Uh, machine is unbiased, but then also if, you know, Chris will notice since there's anyone there, that would fit something. If she, they can take care of it as well.
Does the machine have any type of camera to it, like an A T M or anything like that?
There, there is one, but it's only for, it's like you can set up a biometric scan whole thing, but it's, it's a, it's not for, for if I got the ID scanner add-on for it specifically because it's expensive to do it the other way. Costs me three dollars every time to do it that way.
And you said this would be not at the entrance, but it would be back.
By the third place, where should you press them? And it's easily movable once if you guys have a problem with location.
And I'm unaware of anybody having, I had at one point reached out just when we were doing our letter license reviews. Just checking with P D saying, hey, you know, is this an issue that we're having in Lincoln and we, we haven't really had that sort of issue. I, I do appreciate that you're moving it away from the entrance and somebody would have to park through. I personally am not against um, allowing for a permit. But I, I like your question as far as the syntax. That that would be an attorney question. Can we, are we able to add a later date if we decide to go through and you know, take a look at and tax on to that particular item? Is there a grandfather to that or is it an ordinance that would take effect as of this, this date?
I don't think this is an issue of, um, existing use, you know, regulating the sale, it would just be, uh, I think that should be something that once if you establish tax, it would apply from the date you establish it going forward. I don't think, I don't think you. Adding a tax to something that's not taxed now. I think to share with council, your concerns that same concerns as far as your cameras are. It's kind of incredible to build a data center as well as space. We can have artificial intelligence with some facial recognition software to judge age, but we're still years. That was my biggest concern I saw was any, any ID to, I mean, because they're very popular.
We also, you know, I'm assuming they have cameras in the bar itself.
That's true.
So that part of it isn't so much a concern for me. I, I do like the thought of someone being able to come in and start a business and, and build from that. So.
As far as the taxes, it's all done electronically, but instead of seven percent, you guys raise or do an access tax, I could do it still.
Well, I guess it's, it's up for approval for you and I.
Would it possible to, to this until the rest of you when the other council members are present? Or is it something that you need to see? I don't know if she is, but I mean, I'd love to do this.
Is the machine in?
Nope. Uh, that's, I don't know what's.
Okay.
Uh, basically just waiting for the okay to. Yeah, but I, I believe in that that Davis was the one who, um, are getting it off till then. Put that into the.
I was, I'm just looking at the order section. Uh, I hadn't looked at this before in the meeting, but you also additions well, seven pages. The city also just about to say about that. The debt section says the city of Lincoln is hereby granted or be for self tobacco products or electronic smoking devices at the E T L. The persons or businesses have to put a tobacco dealer's license. So it might, it might be that, you know, tobacco license that the city has. So, but I can look at it. So, um, might even give permission.
To that.
If they got that, they have the license.
Do you remember?
Kind of like, yeah, friend.
So yeah, I was thinking, well, that better be sort of.
Okay. Uh, is there a possibility of adding this to Tuesday's special meeting just for?
Yes.
Okay. And I can. I'm assuming if, if you want to do some light work on that.
Um, just one part, just go on. Yes, whatever I can do, but it's not your word to me from you.
Do we need to do specifically just to ensure that the city's moved it all ready past?
Yeah, the way that I'm reading your code is that if you have a, uh, if you have a state in North Dakota tobacco, the air size, you can sell and detail of the city. So I'm reading it, but, but I would like it to be on the agenda on Tuesday. And if there's a different answer, I'll come to that answer and then decide, but it looks like twelve oh seven oh nine. When has this ability automatically with the ability for the city to open the permission if there are violations rather than having, uh, somebody company get the permission from him. So, but I want to look at how twelve was seven, eight and twelve, seven, nine fit together.
And that might be somebody even to go into crystals and figuring that to their permits that they have to have most of them to want to, because they have to be that distinct. So, but we'll, we'll put it on the agenda for Tuesday, shouldn't change.
Oh, that's super important. I do post, I have to post, oh, uh, sales and use stats, tobacco license on the machine. So I have a, and just take two sides of the conversation.
All right. So you, were you required to have your own or is that because it's your business that you have?
I have a part of that, right? Uh, for each bank machine too, and it's supposed to be hosted conspicuously.
All right. Recap the engineering.
Did you, Mayor and council members, uh, you knew it in the part for last month for two weeks. And we had the, uh, same regular council meetings and P O, uh, funding zoning and order adjustments. Uh, planning zoning, we did, uh, actually get canceled. Uh, they didn't have individuals that were, so, um, kind of, we did end up waiting for enough development to get out. Been that, we're agreeing. And so we just held that order adjustment meeting at that point. Uh, so kind of moving through things, uh, application reviews, uh, just have final plan. And that's for Ridge third edition and Turkey metals edition. And those are currently pending waiting. Now I have plenty of zoning, uh, to be heard here at the end of July. Uh, residential development applications, we had two, one in nineteen sixty six, six, sixty sixth street. You know, one at forty four, fifty five Pine Wood Loop. Uh, three accessory building permits, uh, variant request. And, uh, commercial development, uh, you know, one site plan, sixty six oh five Humbert Road. Uh, utility plans not officially under review, but we're working with, uh, the engineer for Ridge addition, uh, or Ridge addition or Ridge third addition, kind of get uh, water lines laid out, making sure they're meeting, uh, city requirements, uh, cell central regional water district, make sure things are coordinated there as well. So. And then for other information, uh, uh, North Dakota D O T has approved, uh, using highway safety improvement program funds to install a roundabout at Lincoln Row and Yuckin Row in this year twenty nine. So that'll be an improvement coming up a little bit down the road, but, uh, sooner it's on the schedule, the better. So. Uh, so any, any questions on anything?
I did about that. Roundabout, that does speed things up quite a bit.
Right. Hope forward to that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And under our attorney's reports, we need to add to.
I already said, oh, I have one thing I'd love to do, also, I do, I do have a chance to look at your policy as to whether or not if city. As to whether or not the city has adopted. A public comment. Policy. But on August first, the the legis- the legislature has mandated. Um that all cities, but also some other local subdivisions conclude a public comment. And um. I think that your policy probably basically some how you announce it is consistent with that, that the. The the statute allows the city to request that. The person who wants to be confident, their name or address as a prerequisite for them to to make comment. And then to limit the comment to what's on the current agenda or they can limit it to the current agenda and. One preceding agenda item. Uh and then of course. You know, no defattatory or disruptive or whatever, um and then we the cities has a. Um sample draft. Public comment policy that they put together in light of this legislation, so I don't want to ask anybody's radar here, but I don't break it out if. If it's something that the city might want to get out, that legislation goes into effect on the first of August.
And I we did. Discuss it and I wasn't aware, because we did do a little draft. But if legal cities has one, that would be one of the ones that just. And then on the next agenda, I don't, or the next to. Council meeting. If the baby had that first. Approval because of this. Statute for it is.
Delete the enact or whatever, but I'll I'll get the legal city plans circulated, so.
Okay, and then I know that city staff has already. I created a signing sheet. At the podium for anybody who does come up during that time, so thank you for that. So we'll move on to portfolios.
Uh after the couple storms, we had the. Free area of the dump site definitely filled up fast, so other tours were working on, calling out trees is my plan, Phil. Uh they've been mowing ditches and there are a lagoon. Uh new truck that was ordered had arrived and working on all being with the necessary tools. Ordered some new street signs because they're going to start a circulation or. Kind of schedule of replacing street signs still at the city as they start to fade the weather. And Director Shoots and Brandon took an online wastewater course uh that involves staying in a bacteria water, so. You ever learned some stuff there? If you don't mind. S H step up for.
May I hear you council members? Thank you for allowing me to speak. During this item. Um I have for you included in the packet. A memorandum regarding the pavement management program. And just a brief update is that we're working to. Upload information into the paper software. Um we're also working on a draft segment map that will be able to. Meet with the city and review and get your approval on all those segments are laid out. For determining sections that we want to move forward with updates. So once uh this map is approved. S H will be able to begin field data collection. Along with this, we have shared with you a GIS segment work amendment. This is amendment number one to the pavement management program. It's our understanding that the GIS information that the city has does not include. The roadway ed work. So we need to develop that line work in order to develop the segments. Um as part of the ongoing payment management program, we would like to assist with the development of. Uh this comprehensive roadway. Assessment using the paper program and a key part of that is this GIS information. So the amendment would allow S H to finalize the segment map. Using available resources and proceed to that field data collection. Approval of the amendment will help us maintain project momentum. And ensure that the city receives a complete and functional payment management tool. That's aligned with the goals of the capital improvement program. Some additional information. About that. Payment management program is that the Arc GIS shape files would be the city of Lincoln's deliverables. So you would receive all of those as part of the final product. The work is estimated to be. Four thousand four hundred and forty three dollars, so we would propose to. Uh increase the not to exceed contract amount by forty five hundred dollars. That would get. The contract from the original amount of thirty five thousand dollars. For the pavement management program to thirty nine thousand five hundred. Any additional questions for me on these items?
Now, I did look at this and I I need issues.
I'd like to make caution to improvement and I want to the payment management program.
Would you have a first by Councilman? Second by Councilman instead, um David Sayney. opposed. And so moved. Thank you. I was very thinking forward to, I forgot who I was. Yes. Want to mention, good.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
I hope everybody has great work for July, hopefully everybody stays safe. I would just like to remind people, please clean up debris when you're done. Stuff that's left down on the streets eventually washed down into the storm sewer. May eventually make its way out to Apple Creek. So I just want to remind people, let's try to keep our community clean, try to keep our waterways clean. And have a safe port.
With the portfolio, I agree, thank you, um. You were talking about the street signs and fading, but not have you taken a look at the northern community?
I guess I'm not aware, but I can talk with Dr. Shane, I know.
Then there's some, they've been around for quite a few years and I don't know what has been done.
I'm not sure if that would be city responsibility or if that would be private rules that they would maintain.
Oh, we don't maintain them, even though we would consider you again.
I think within the. Manufacturer community that those are private strengths. I didn't make that one, I'm already sure that it is, that that infrastructure is not the city.
Thank you. Uh Councilman Shoemaker.
I was gonna say the same thing, please, pick up the firework garbage and when you get done setting them up. And wire all over the side, close the street and door, the next thing you know, put them in your garbage can. My maintenance for tonight. Uh also, you want submissions for city local or else we'll just kind of have to make one and. Just this is what it is, some people want to put their opinion, because we certainly like our community to be involved in that.
In the newsletter, uh the four samples, are there four entrances or five or? And they are actually main focus of the newsletter. That should be coming in your utility bills, so I might jog some ideas in everybody and. I'm excited to see. Going forward from there, so. Under my portfolio. We're just going to limit it to. The reassignment of portfolios. As. amended or approved. Throughout uh that first meeting reorganization last July. So public safety. Um this these are my recommendations would be for Councilman adjusted. Public Works, Councilman Shoemaker. Um for the admin, Councilwoman Arthalia. And beautification, Lieutenant Councilwoman Davis. If if you are in agreement. Or any discussion that you input that you have. Um the one thing that I would like to see because there's been so much work on the super regionalization. That uh with with public works following their councilman Shoemaker, that you would be available for. You know, any collaboration that needs to get around sharing of information, if you're really appreciative.
Yeah, that would be a problem.
Uh it one of the things that was brought to my attention was. The number of meetings that. Fell under the beautification. And and that can be a concern, so we have the planning and zoning, uh which. Would fall. Maybe in that uh. Public Works area. Admin or the EDC. And beautification for Park Board, which would include the at tree board. So. Just be aware of that, I don't have to pack it with me, but I have provided. A monthly. Just a couple extra sheets, so you can write down questions that you've had or things that occurred during that month. To pass on to the next portfolio holder, so.
When is the conference?
After this meeting. Right, so. I just to to reiterate, public works would be in their council. Or public safety. Councilman Gurrenstead, Public Works, Councilman Shoemaker. Admin would be Councilwoman Arthavia, beautification would be Councilwoman Davis.
Those four words, which ones be saying?
So public safety would not have additional meetings to go to. Uh unless chief has a standard meeting that he would want you to take part in. Uh with public works, it would be planning and zoning. Which is that third Tuesday. Uh the admin would be EDC and I believe that's the first Monday of each month. And beautification would be. Park Board. Slash uh treaty board. Next, we will, if there are any questions. Are you okay? Including your sentence, perfect. Okay, we have that, you just reported. I was.
And I have a few things. So. And first one is the budget meetings. Um we're gonna start thinking about sending meetings for that, so the new. Items um that have kind of changed is um. Honor before August eleventh, governing body has to be there and proof that we're living in a budget statement. And since public budget hearing date no earlier than September seventh and later than October seventh. Um please note that the due date is August eleventh due to the. Um the city auditor provides the budget hearing date notation to the county auditor. And please tell them again today is August eleven due to October ten, Sunday, so. So kind of to resume that into July. Very first week of August, we're going to have to set some. So we'll need to get together and go over the budget and then. Decide when we want to have that public hearing. Okay, my next thing is, um. And I'm sorry Anne's not here, but Derek, if you're coming on to public safety. Um not to quote a derb, um for the insurance, if at least seven was to be canine, um. It is included. Like there's no additional costs, it's already in what we already have, and I took up an email, um. From Scott, I'm standing there. So um I think it's gone out to you guys all.
I smell there won't be any additional costs.
Yeah, it's. Uh I had a phone call today, I just wanted to make you guys all aware, I'm with your start stopper. Um he's the coordinator uh with the emergency. Emergency management um with the state and he let us know that um. Our siren tower number sixteen is not functioning properly right now, um. It is throwing some air cold, is what he said, um they did work. Um on the June twenty seventh storm, the siren did sound rotate and did pass. Um but it's not working now since since then. Um they're hoping to get somebody, whether it's public works out or somebody from public safety. To actually go there and go coordinate something, they'll run the test, you'll hear it or you want to hear it, um. And then he would suggest that i- if it's. Decides to not come back on. Um. They use a company called West Shore Services and um. To do any magnets that would maybe need to be done on it so that it can spec online if it continues to work in case no storm. Um my next thing is I did post the CCRs and then we posted by the first. Um those are our waterfall reports. Um so they're hung all over town, tumbleweed, crystals, all of those areas, they ferment. I do have a couple back here, if somebody would like to review them, they are on our website. Um so that's all done. Um. Talk about speakers a little bit, so Bluehawk, which we bought the equipment from, um I did call, he came out. There's a couple, I have an estimate, it's for a little total, but. He would suggest that we add two more speakers about where you're at, um Mr. Wall is sitting. Um kind of add two more speakers there, seeing how that works, um. He could say that the speakers are supposed to be about this close at all times, so that you really can hear, um. If that doesn't work, he could add, um. A little piece of equipment that would would. Exemplify the sound even a little more, um. So if you guys would just like to see that estimate, um. I can send that to you, um. But I I would like approval to at least get the two speakers.
Would someone like to make the motion?
Do you have a cost estimate?
This is for the whole thing, um but we're not, he doesn't have it broke out into just. He was supposed to send me two codes, one with just the speakers. And then one if we needed to move further of that.
Looks like based on what's broken out here, it's probably going to be between six to seven hundred dollars.
Yeah, they come in a four pack.
Okay.
So we wouldn't be buying off all of them, he said he would separate them into two. Um because we only really maybe need two more. Do you do you hear a difference tonight even without the speakers?
Just one question, if if it. If you need the microphones closer to you, wills in order to get sound amplified properly, will two speakers actually help you? Or should just you adjust the microphone?
He said two more because right now you just have the two right here. And then you have the two way in the back, so he thought also um for those speakers to carry through if we talk properly enough. That it would also help right in the middle. So between doing those two things before we buy any further equipment, um those were, those were his two suggestions. And I think the mayor was here that day.
He said that that originally it was set up for chairs going all the way into the back. And so you've got an absent space. For amplification right in the middle where most of the people are going to sit and currently. Uh the sound is coming to the speakers on the computer. So I think initially we were going to see. On the computer, so I think initially we were gonna see, or the discussion was to kinda see what difference this makes. But that he did recommend getting at least those other speakers, because that's where most of the community sits. Not in that front row, so.
That's a very nice improvement. What you have here now, very nice.
I say it sounds, I hear a better feedback.
He said it wouldn't matter if you got the little pins on, you got the pins. Um, you still have to be, you know, it's still this different, so it's really no different than you moving your speaker a little bit closer. Or if you had those, so he would suggest that you really don't spend the money on something like that when. If you held these properly, it, it carries better.
I guess I would make a motion about who purchased.
We have a motion by Councilman Gristed, it's her second.
Honestly, I think the changes that were made for this meeting are sufficient.
Uh, do you prefer to skip with this for a little while so you know it?
Maybe give us more feedback from the, from the larger audience. Um, cause it's six or seven hundred dollars for the speaker cost, not including installation cost.
Uh, that was.
Would you like to?
Yes, please.
Sorry, I didn't.
Now those speakers would not have any effect on the pickup if correct, they can run. Through the microphone. But, uh, it would help with the people that sit underneath those. Would be placed speakers, so. Short of rearranging the, or the setup that we currently have.
Okay, after Steve has all sent the motion.
Even face that. Now we have a first by Councilman Gristed, a second by Councilman Schumaker, uh, favor say aye?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? If we can throw a call for that place. Sean?
Yes.
Gristed?
Yes.
Mayor Burden?
Yes.
Thank you, the next thing I wanna go back. And it's okay if you get don't, but I just wanna bring it back up again, is the superior glass. Um, estimate that we have gotten back in May for the, the front office, um, staff. So I had called around, because we had two estimates, one from senior's glass, and that was twenty two fifteen. But he did not put the speaker or, or do the cutting of the opening. Um, through the glass to be able to grab stuff back and forth, um, he said that you'd have to. Try to find a hand in hand, well, there's not very many people that are experienced in that. So I would ask to go back to superior glass, because it, um, included. The laminated glass and four inch diameter speaker bowl, plus the steel eight by ten standard drop in deal tray. For the net sum of forty two twenty five, and I'd have to verify, because this estimate was good for thirty days. Um, but I, I would like to proceed with that if possible.
So you're looking for a motion to approve, correct?
If I may, since this is under the seventy five hundred dollars that we set for procurements, is a motion necessary?
That would be a question.
I think so.
So I could be a bit.
Yes, I would say as.
Right, thank you.
Did you give any details on the security that this bus provides, is it, is it how easy it is to break, is it tempered? Um, being that it's laminated, it shatters, it turns plastic whatever.
Wish Matt was here, but um, for the most part, my understanding is like right now. You, you can just open that window, there, there's, the window that is there is not for any type of perfect, uh, protection. If somebody were to come in, cause that piece of glass you could just take and. Uh, so this would just provide a little more stability there, um, Matt did say that it could. Shatter, but it won't, like if somebody were to shoot at it or, or whatever, it could shatter, but you're not gonna have a ceiling pieces of glasses.
It's not that approved, but.
Um, it would be better, have, have you been in the office with the glasses in there right now?
No.
Please stop by.
I think it was more during the COVID.
But now it's getting to be a point of. Safety.
That's why I like to see some added security. If that takes a classroom with really thick piece of plastic, that is more approved or?
Um, the cost per complete, um. Would be way more money, so this, it, it, he stated this is what they install in most places. He did say this is what the city, uh, police department has in Bismarck, so it's very comparable to what they have.
Okay.
Okay, my next question, and you guys can think about that. I wanted to turn to the beautification, so we, we kind of have a process in the office of how we do this. But we are getting a lot of kickback, um. We just send out the certified letters, um, we make sure they get picked up, but here's the issue. That we're really seeing a lot of, well, have you looked over my neighbor's fence, have you looked at my neighbor's lawn, have you looked at my neighbor's sweets? Have you done this or that, so I'm kinda instead of, cause we're not, we kinda just act. On the beautification matters when they are received. So I do have a list of about. Three hundred places, and it's not just a lawn, it's parking, it's lawns. It includes a lot of different things, but I was wondering if we could just send out a general letter. And not specifically like named. Name. I guess I don't know, I. I don't wanna like name, like, I want a general letter, not specific, and then as we go through that list, that we would list. This, we, we would add the ordinance with the letter of. Like if, if it's parking, like parking on the lawns, and then instead of sending a certified, we could just spend sixty nine cents. That it costs to send these letters and put what's the ordinance to these letters. That way nobody feels like they're targeted at this time and that. It, it just, if you're gonna do it for one, you should just do it for all, if you really wanna start making your, your ordinances stand. And you wanna do that beautification, uh, because people are feeling like we're just targeting them. I'm not saying that we wouldn't address like specific ones that came to us, but. Um, like I said, in the last couple of weeks, we just, we just had a gentleman in this week and he was like, yeah, look at my neighbor's yard, you know, who's. Who's yours the menace, or, you know, we're just getting a lot of kickback, a lot of feedback and.
Well, and I think that's a great idea, because you've got people that might not know that it's against ordinance to do a VNC. To where if you share with them, that this is.
But I, I would like to do it by just a general letter, like you do fifty letter, if it's parking, you do fifty letters if it's lawn or. Whatever it may be, that way we're not targeting any one specific person, but just letting them know, here, this is what could happen if you don't. Whatever, and we just can't keep having exceptions, oh, you know, or, but as Marky says, if you're gonna follow him. They apply to everybody, they don't apply for one or two people.
So you're basically wanting to send out letters of just informative of what the ordinances. Like general ordinances are for beautification.
Yeah, cause like, uh, Matt, uh, two games head on round Terry around town. You know, when they started getting the complaints too, you know, he's like. I'm just gonna go around town and say everybody that has, I'm just gonna make the list of everybody that has a violation, you know, and. He's just saying, you, you gotta quit targeting just these people. You know, you got, you send out a beautification letter for the person and you look across the street and you see the exact same thing, well, they don't have a letter. So then they feel like they're being targeted. We're spending money for certified letters, so I would like to do a general, just everybody that's on that list gets a letter. Um, I'd like to be able to make a, a, a post, whether it's on the city of, you know, just saying, hey, please, you know. Do the ordinances when it comes to parking and law, you know, just something really simple, just so that for those people that are on there or whatever, that they can see it.
And then after some time, after the general letter goes out, go back to send the certified?
Or, or go back to following, you know, the process that we have, if, if you notice something and, and we get a, a. Beautification letter saying, hey, I want this checked out, you know, then we, we can go back following that procedure.
What does it cost to do a mass mailing in the city of Lincoln?
Well, like right now, if I have three hundred, it's, it's times basically sixty nine cents a letter, you know, so.
I don't think she was talking about every household, just the ones that have been identified, correct?
Correct, we have three hundred residences in the city of Lincoln, they have been identified with some type of. Or an inside relationship.
I just get touch with the entire city.
Oh, no. I was connecting to this name, so it's good that that clarification, right, no, that's good.
And that might be an opportunity for the beautification portfolio holder to also, um. Be part of. That discussion, well, no, they'd be too firm, obviously, when that be happening, but, but you might find trends that. Might help identify things that we need to adjust in the ordinance. Somebody doing it, or, you know, a hundred fifty people doing this and that has been an issue, well, maybe we need to look back at, at ordinance and say this isn't necessary. So I think it's a great idea.
Be nice kinda general mail out, letting them know, and then, uh, if you wanna wait like thirty days or whatever after it goes out. You can kinda check to see if these locations still have these ordinance violations and enable with the certified letters after that. Any following legal procedure, maybe.
Do you feel like that thirty days would be enough time?
Yeah, to me, you can.
Or, or five days or whatever would be appropriate.
Yes, hello, um, I think thirty days would be great, and I think we should do it in the insert that utility line insert, it's a good way to get about it, it's about the same cost. So, that's the sixty nine certified letter instead of utilizing our staff to do it.
Always that we have.
Yeah, true.
We can say we may get a group.
Stop right up front with me, my name's safety boss, um, yeah, and then, uh, it is just to confirm nobody is being targeted, it's complete base. So you're seeing like a neighbor, neighbor, and then that neighbor points at another neighbor, so.
It's, it's just gonna be coming a cycle that I'm starting to see, you know, once, and you're starting to see it online while across the street or. Side or two houses down or around the block or. Time to do it. You guys are all okay with that? So move forward with that, thank you. Thank you, that's all I have, back and forth, everybody.
And. Okay, you have, um. Chief. Third buyer would like to sign up, before we close.
Uh, good evening, mayor, uh, councilmembers, uh, citizens, just a quick thing, I'm not gonna. Bore you with my report to begin out of here and third enjoying the, or July holiday, but I just did want to, uh. Echo the same remarks that Councilman, uh, Gristed and, um, Schumaker did, um. Everybody have a safe, happy Fourth of July, but make sure that you properly dispose of. Fire without, be safe, but also properly dispose of your fireworks, um. Just to quickly, uh, last year, uh, there was a huge, I just quickly looked up some statistics with that. Last year there was eleven deaths, uh, related to fireworks in the United States, which was a thirty eight percent increase from twenty twenty three. And there was fourteen thousand seven hundred injuries across the US, which is a fifty two percent increase. Um, from twenty twenty three, and that was according to the US Consumer Product Safety Commission, I'm in an article that they, um. Put out on June twenty fifth, uh, and with that, there was also seventeen hundred emergency room treated injuries during that timeframe. So. We want everybody to have a safe, happy Fourth of July, and we wanna not have, not be running around last year, I think we ended up. Having two structured fires related to exactly that, with fireworks in garbage cans or. That stuff and putting them up against your houses, it starts a house on fire, so. We wanna have an uneventful Fourth of July as well. That's all I.
Great, thank you. On a side, not the early phones, on Wednesday, I saw there are tires on the streets, that it's gonna be adults, what's his children? Equal event, I, it's a fundraiser for, um, a local community. Person, uh, that has served the city of, or the residents of Lincoln in the world's way over the years. So. Come out and kickball, have some fun, and I will say that we're going to standard journey, it is seven twenty five.